Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the City Commission Meeting this Thursday, September 4th, 2025, at the Municipal and Safety Building here in Johnson City. It is 6 o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. Pastor Willie Lunsford with Midway Baptist Church will give the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone will please rise.
Mercy, we thank you for the City of Johnson City and the many blessings that have come from your gracious hand. Father, we pray for these leaders of ours, we pray that you will give them wisdom from on high, that you will allow them to lead in such a way that they will be submissive unto your will and way. And Father, we pray that for the well-being of the citizens of Johnson City, that you will just continue to watch over and care for them. Father, forgive us where we have sinned against you, where we have failed you in many respects, but Lord, we thank you for your forgiveness that we know is full and free. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, and it is in his name that we offer up this prayer and pray in his name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ball?
Your first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission Meeting held on Thursday, August 21st, 2025.
Move approval.
Second, Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Next order of business is a proclamation presented to, in recognition of the 10th anniversary of Dominion Senior Living.
Whereas Dominion Senior Living of Johnson City opened its doors in 2015 as one of the first buildings constructed from the ground up by Dominion, establishing a foundation of compassionate care symbolically marked by the placement of a holy Bible in its cornerstone. And whereas Dominion Senior Living has spent the past decade delivering high-quality senior care rooted in a faith-based and culture-first model that promotes dignity in the lives of older adults. And whereas Dominion Senior Living provides specialized services including assisted living, memory care for those living with Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's disease, and dementia, and rehabilitative services such as physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech-language pathology. And whereas Dominion Senior Living's commitment to expanding their life is demonstrated through personalized wellness, spiritual, and social activities, as well as chef-prepared meals, all designed to support a joyful living experience for residents. And whereas this 10th anniversary celebration reflects the values of family ownership, faith, and service to the East Tennessee community, and marks a decade of dedication to meeting the evolving needs of seniors in Johnson City. Now, therefore, I, John Hunter, Mayor of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby congratulate Dominion Senior Living on its 10th anniversary, and on behalf of the fourth commissioners, say thank you to all those who have played a part in enhancing the quality of life for our eldest residents over the past decade. Would you like to say?
You've got to say so. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve our seniors. I've been with this community for six of those 10 years, and it is truly a blessing.
Excellent. Commissioner? As the mayor makes his way up, the next order of business is public comment, and we have one speaker tonight, Sylvan Bruni, to speak.
You know the rules, right?
I do know the rules, and this is about Horizon 2045, so good evening, commissioners. The Horizon 2045 process was a real success for Johnson City. It gave us a shared community vision for the future and has been described as a decision-making tool for this body. But a plan is only as strong as the commission's commitment to implement it, and as Ms. Hodges said two weeks ago, it has no teeth unless you make it active through plans, programs, policies, and projects initiated by this commission. So that concern is not theoretical. The Washington County Commission's Commerce, Industry, and Agriculture Committee just this morning voted in a way that compromises community voices with respect to Bright Ridge. And as I mentioned two weeks ago, Bright Ridge's current plan for Buffalo Mountain with an industrial substation runs directly against what the Flum calls for from Horizon 2045. So if our city doesn't set a proactive tone towards implementing Horizon 2045, these kinds of conflicts will multiply, and the shared vision people invested in will be undermined. And the plan itself is very clear. Horizon 2045 calls for proactive steps by this commission. So for example, priority action Q1.1.4 on page 168 addresses zoning changes you can drive. Q2.1.1 on page 170 points directly to Bright Ridge's alignment with the Flum. And Q3.2.1 on page 172 highlights the housing crisis and the need for immediate commission action. Those are not passive recommendations, they assume leadership. So my concern tonight is whether Horizon 2045 will drive active and transparent leadership, or if it'll sit on a shelf while third parties set the course. I'll leave you, as always, with three questions. Number one, how will the commission ensure that Horizon 2045 is implemented proactively through zoning updates or other policy action that the plan itself calls for, rather than waiting on outside rezoning or development requests that would shape our city? Number two, how will you engage residents in this implementation so that their shared community vision remains real and not just a slogan? And finally, number three, given recent decisions, whether in the limitation of public comments or requiring insurance for community meetings, or ignoring the Flum conflicts like Bright Ridge at Buffalo Mountain, how will you restore trust that Horizon 2045 will truly guide city decisions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Ball?
Commissioners, your next order of business is item 6, which is the consent agenda.
I'll start with my, on to my right, Vice Mayor, any items to pull?
Not for me.
Okay. Commissioner Brock?
Yes, and Ms. Ball, I apologize, I didn't talk to you about this earlier, but if we could just have a real short summary of 6.1.1.
Commissioner Wise?
I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Ms. Ball?
Yes, item 6.1.1 is to consider approval of a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to manage a federally funded fiber optic network expansion, and I believe, yes, we have Mr. Todd here to speak about that item.
I'm Anthony Todd, I'm the Traffic Engineering Manager for the city.
Could I ask you a question before you start in? If you would start by how much fiber the city already has in the ground, up above, where it is, and then how this plan adds to that, and?
Sure, we have about 17 miles of fiber right now, most of it's in the ground, we have some that's overhead on poles, but most of it's in the ground. And then what this would do is start to connect us out to the Boones Creek area and to the Gray area. We have about 85 traffic signals right now connected in fiber, and so this would connect those that we don't have the ability to communicate with and see what's going on out in those far-reaching areas, which is probably the areas that you need the most because you can't tell what's going on. By the time you get out there, everything's already changed. So it gives us that ability. We also get to connect to other buildings, fire departments or whatever is along the way as well, so we connect them into the city's network.
Will most of this be underground?
This will be underground.
Oh, okay. My follow-up question is, we have a lot of fiber on the poles now, I mean, there's more than enough fiber on the pole. Have we looked at other providers to see if there's any way we could buy dark fiber that they may have extra capacity for?
We do use some from one of the fiber providers when we don't have the ability to connect. The problem is that we don't have the ability to control the cost that way, so as we keep adding to it, we can control the cost by owning our own fiber, and we also maintain it, we do the splicing, we do the installation, we do it all.
So this agreement, TDOT, is paying, what, about 80% of it?
80%.
Okay, all right, so it's a good deal for us?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Commissioners, the next orders of business are ordinances under first reading. Item 7.1 is annexation by owner consent at Zero Boones Creek Road. I'm going to read both 7.1 and 7.2 together as they require two separate votes, but they're both the same project. 7.1 is to consider approval of a preliminary resolution calling for a public hearing on a voluntary annexation of approximately 67.02 acres along Boones Creek Road and Christian Church Road. Item 7.2 is ordinance 4927-25, which is an ordinance assigning a planned arterial business district to approximately 67.02 acres located along Boones Creek Road and Christian Church.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Riley Putney, Development Coordinator with the Planning Division. As Ms. Ball stated, this presentation does combine items 7.1 and 7.2 with subsequent recommendations for both items at the end of the presentation. This is a voluntary annexation for roughly 67 acres at the intersection of Boones Creek Road and Christian Church Road. Just to orient the commission with the timeline, the first time this was seen was August 7th. With the request to proceed, the Planning Commission voted to recommend it on August 12th, and we are here today for the vote to call for a preliminary resolution which calls for the public hearing. If you notice on the timeline, there is a gap from today until November 6th and November 20th. That's due to the applicant requesting a little bit more time to get all of their information and sales agreements in order. So the preliminary resolution tonight will call for a public hearing on November 20th. The notification timeline, signs were placed on the property and letters sent out for the public hearing for Planning Commission on June 13th. We added the annexation information July 3rd. Signs will be placed, our new annexation signs, and the City Commission public hearings, letters will be sent out tomorrow for the November 20th public hearing.
The letters that are sent out 200 feet, now those go to city and county residents within 200 feet?
Yes, all property owners within a 200-foot radius.
Thank you.
Does that include? Does that include commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
So to orient the commission just on the site, it is outlined here, if I can, yeah, there we go, in yellow, again, at the corner of Christian Church Road and Boones Creek Road, it is roughly 67, a little bit over 67 acres. The request is contiguous with city limits along Boones Creek Road and to the north. It is within our urban growth boundary and service area, and they are requesting B4 commercial district due to a proposed commercial development. A plan of services was conducted and all departments provided their responses, which is included in your packets, and there were no red flags or issues with the proposal. Cost-benefit analysis has a break-even year, three with roughly $219,000 of revenue between property tax, solid waste, and water sewer fees. The surrounding Johnson City zoning includes B4, which is what they are proposing, RP5 along the Boones Creek Road corridor, and this property, if it is annexed, will also lie within the corridor overlay district, which it just requires some building architectural standards and certain screening standards. The current Washington County zoning is PRBD, which is Planned Residential and Business, and A1 General Agriculture. The Horizon 2045 future land use calls for this to be a regional mixed-use place type, which is in line with what we are recommending as a B4 zoning district, which relies heavily on retail and commercial restaurants, mixed use of multifamily, more of your higher-density commercial and residential uses. The Horizon 2045 also has objectives that support this annexation with prosperous economies, annexing along a key commercial corridor and supporting commercial growth. It also aligns with quality growth and development and supportive services since utilities and services are already in place along this corridor. Staff recommends approval of both annexation, the preliminary resolution, and the zoning assignment. Due to it being adjacent to city limits and within the urban growth boundary and service area, it aligns with the future land use map of Horizon 2045, and it is supported by several Horizon growth objectives. So the two actions tonight for the commission are to approve or deny the preliminary resolution and the zoning assignment.
Ms. Purdy, just a quick question, something's going off in my head with some legislation that got passed this past year. So we make a formal notification to the county that this annexation request is coming to the city?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I would move approval on the annexation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
I would move approval on the second, which is the ordinance assigning the zone to the same properties since they were presented together.
So I'll make a second to assign it Plan Terrestrial Business B4?
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Can I clarify, this is calling for the public hearing, this is not the public hearing tonight?
Correct, yes, this calls, this sets that public hearing for November 20th.
So, I've said it before, sorry.
It passed, oh, yes.
The next order of business is ordinance 4928-25, it's an ordinance to abandon an existing sanitary sewer easement located at 2715 North Roan Street, within property owned by Pritchett Family Limited Partnership.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Ms. Ball. John Lane, Water Sewer Department, Assistant Director. So what I have before you tonight is ordinance 4928-25 for first reading. So this is regarding an existing easement for a property on 2715 North Roan Street, so this is at Swanee Drive and North Roan Street, right at the corner there, next to Cootie Brown's and the Pritchett property. So history there, this existing easement is from 1969. The sewer line was actually relocated in 2003, so a new public sewer line was installed at that timeframe. The sewer line for abandonment tonight, like I mentioned, is from 1969. The public line has already been relocated, so it's no longer in use for the public. The line is actually over, was, the line has actually been impacted by a building addition that happened when Cootie Brown's expanded in 2003. So at that point, the new line was relocated, so the sewer line is no longer in use for the public. You can kind of see a map here for actually that parcel there where we're talking about, 2715 North Roan Street. This map kind of shows the difference, what's in green is the public sewer line that's in use today, what's in yellow was actually the one that's before you tonight for the abandonment for three readings. This came up actually through the replant process this summer, so as part of that, this was actually requested by the property owner. Staff definitely recommends approval, any questions, though?
I would make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Mayor, the next order of business is ordinance number 4930-25. This is the first reading of an ordinance providing for the conveyance of a portion of right-of-way owned by the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, located in the 9th Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, to The Well Inc. upon the terms and conditions contained herein and repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. My name is Steve Willis, Assistant City Manager. This ordinance, should you elect to approve on three full readings, would allow for the conveyance of about 700 square feet of right-of-way currently owned by the City of Johnson City. The Well, who you're well aware of, no pun intended, just built a new facility on West Walnut Street, a beautiful facility. They have an interest in acquiring the building that's located at 824 West Walnut, the old ETSU bookstore, and as they began their due diligence on that process, it was learned that the building is actually built in the city right-of-way. And the building is actually depicted here in the survey with this dashed line, so you can see how it encroaches upon the city right-of-way. So what we would recommend that you convey is this slice, as I'm going with the mouse here, in this area. So staff recommends this based on two reasons. One, it would clear up this encroachment that has been in place since the city acquired the property from the railroad. This is a longstanding inherited issue. And then secondly, it will actually square the property up, which will fit very nicely with a project you'll hear about a little later this evening regarding the Cherokee Stormwater Project. And what is in place now between this area here and State of Franklin is a non-pervious asphalt, kind of broken-up parking lot, which certainly doesn't help with stormwater runoff. So that will allow us to remove that, get green space in there with the stormwater project, and we feel like this is the right move. So staff would recommend your approval on first reading.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Willis?
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mayor, the next order of business is under second readings, this is item 8.1. This is ordinance number 4926-25, second reading. This is FY 2025 supplemental budget ordinance, an ordinance appropriating additional funds to the various departments and divisions of the City of Johnson City with additional revenue from local, state, and federal sources.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Good evening, I'm Dustin Thompson. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. There have been no changes since first reading. Just as a reminder, this is your FY 25 supplemental budget ordinance, and it sets a budget for items not captured in the original FY 25 ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise, we recommend approval on second reading.
Move approval.
And just a quick question, this includes the schools as well because they're part of our budget?
Yes, ma'am, it sure does.
And a lot of it is the schools because of the way they receive their revenue at the time intervals.
That is correct.
Second.
And just as a reminder, public hearing was on first reading.
That is correct.
Ms. Laughs?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Next item of business is number, is item 9.2, which is ordinance 4923-25. This is the third and final reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of 21.43 acres located at 2875 East Oakland Avenue from R4 and B4 to R5.
This, I thought this was the Horizon?
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, this is item 9.1, excuse me, ordinance 4920-23. This is the third and final reading of an ordinance to adopt and certify Johnson City's comprehensive plan. This is very important, Ms. Hodges, Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan.
Ms. Hodges?
Good evening, I'm Whitney Hodges, Planning Manager for the City of Johnson City, and tonight is the third and final reading and adoption of the community Horizon 2045 plan. And if you will allow, I have a few thank yous, and I'll try not to take up too much time. But first, when I started this project was in December of 2022, and I was a planning consultant, so I was on the outside. So all of these thank yous come from a place of being on the outside. And initially, I got to work with a really great staff and a set of consultants that molded a plan that I really think and hope that you feel is a vision and a reflection of what this city is and can be. So I'd like to thank the planning staff, transportation, streets, water and sewer, administration, Parks and Rec, and communication, and the NPO. Especially, I would like to thank the unconventional ways that Parks and Rec and communications allowed a creative person to explore what public input could look like. We met as a consultant team with communications once a month, and they were able to help me put a lot of ideas into play that really wouldn't have been something on a traditional route. And they also were able to get this message out to the media, so I would like to thank the media. They've been a really great partner in helping the community understand the importance of this plan and why that people should come out and be a part of that. Parks and Rec were able to get me into places that were unconventional, like I got to go to after-school programs and meet with people who are often unrepresentative at the Langston Center, as well as the senior citizens, I got to speak with some of those. So these are just a big part of why this project was so special. And with that, we had a tree, not many cop plans get a tree, and I'd like to thank my mother because she sourced everything I needed for this tree, and just as a reminder, you will never outgrow help with your children's school projects. And, let's see, with that, I want to thank everybody who came out. I know we had a slide that showed that we had 20,000 touchpoints and 7,000 people, but I feel like I talked to so many more people than that. And just, I hope that everybody, well, and I've said this many times, we may not all agree with everything that's in this plan or how this plan will be used, but I really hope that you can see something of yourself in it. I'd want to thank the Planning Commission because they worked so very hard, especially, I want to thank Chairman Daganhart and Dr. Ocean Vine. They were at every step of the way, from the selection committee, they were on the advisory committee, and then helping out with the Planning Commission. And lastly, I want to thank you all. You gave me an opportunity to see my city because I am from here in a different way. I got to talk to people and see how they see my city and our city, so I just want to thank you for that. So, and as your planning manager, let's get to it. So, we still have some post-adoption work that will happen, and I just want to kind of reiterate that. For the next four to six weeks, there'll be a transition from a Kimley-Horm website to a Johnson City website, but it will take some time to get there. And I want to remind you of what has already happened. So the Planning Commission has adopted, the adopted and certified is the word that the annotated code uses, they did that and adopted it by a 7-0 vote. Staff recommends approval of the plan as presented. I know that we had some conversation at the public hearing, and I'm here to discuss, if you have some questions about that or want to discuss that further, I can certainly do that. But tonight, whatever you decide, you have three motions before you, should you, if you do want to discuss changes, if you do want to make those changes, you would just add those to your motion for the future land use map. So I'm here and available for questions.
Any comments or questions from commission?
I would. Whitney, thank you so much yourself, you've gone through a transition from your, you know, as a consultant to being on staff, and for all the staff and Planning Commission, as you have said, it's been a really labor of love, and I can tell from your motion, it's a labor of love. I also want to thank Mr. Bruno back there, he's talked to us three different times, and he always has three questions. But I think as we look at now, the final approval, and then what do we do with it? And so, Ms. Ball, I'm going to ask you that, you know, the primary uses of this, you know, from what I see right now, and you can comment further on it, but it will be a budgeting document for us, too, as we look at the different components of it. But, you know, we're still going to need staff recommendations about where we get started. And of course, one of the things that has been really important to me, and I think to everybody sitting up here, is the identification of where- to everybody sitting up here, is the identification of where a lot of the growth is going to take place in the city and the needed infrastructure for that. And those, as we all know, are big-ticket items, that we can start planning for that. And so hopefully, we get to a place where we have the infrastructure primarily in place so that the growth can occur. We're a little bit behind the curve on that now because it's occurring, and then we're, we're coming in and fixing the roads and adding lanes and traffic signals. I think we're going to hear some of that tonight here in a minute. But anyway, anything you want to comment on that, now what?
Yeah, I'm happy to. If you recall in the previous presentations, the slides that showed the different goals and the targets that were shown as highest priorities, those were actionable items, and those were for each department. So what those said is that each of the departments that were represented are charged with doing those as a top priority. So as we go through the next year's budget, we will use this as a guiding document to look at and determine where, where that funding goes. Some of the items don't need funding because they may be items that just don't require money. But in doing the budget, those targeted items that are listed will be the ones that we look at and try to identify within each department on those funding needs.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Louse.
Well, I'll make a comment too before we.
Go for it.
Well, and I'm just appreciate everything you've done, and I don't, and then this is kind of for, Mr. Bruny always does have three good questions, but it's, the, one of them's consistent every time is to make sure this doesn't sit on the shelf, and like a lot of studies do. And it's not often that a consultant or a contractor that's helped put something like this together comes on staff and gets to kind of carry this forward and help make those bullet points and have new bullet points for future commissions. So I just look forward to that. Thank you.
And I guess I would add, this is not a study so much as it is a plan. And I think we've even seen over the last year, while the plan was still very much in draft form, it was still being invoked as part of the rationale for decisions we were making in the short term. I think this is an outgrowth of our strategic plan, and I think you're going to see, I don't think there will ever be a city commission meeting held where there isn't some invocation of the Horizon 2045 Plan because it's that far-reaching in its implications. At the public hearing, we did have some comments, particularly in the area of the, the one-lane tunnel out on Mountain View and Nob Creek that presents some real challenges. And it's worth repeating, the Commission has made multiple visits to Nashville over the last several years, meeting with the TDOT folks to keep that issue front and center. And it, it, it sometimes seems like it's moving on us, but, but we're making sure that it stays on their list. Thankfully, TDOT has adopted now, I think, a more reasonable way of identifying their projects that actually have funding tied to them. So rather than chasing 50 projects and maybe they can fund five, they're actually pursuing the five projects they can pursue, and this is on that list. I believe where we would be is that we would be bidding it in '27, if I remember the dates, which means that we're still, does that sound right, '27? And so, you know, that, that means we're not going to be driving over those railroad tracks for at least another probably five years. And so with that thought in mind, there had been some place types identified on what I guess would be the west side of the railroad tracks that would suggest perhaps a higher density, that the neighbors were concerned about from the standpoint of further traffic. I think that's probably in the long-term the right place type. I just want to go on record here in saying place types are sort of painted in broad brush. And so I, I don't know that it's worth redrawing the map, but I do think in the next five years, I for one would not be particularly excited about entertaining projects and requests outside of that tunnel that drive density up. I think it's a very different question in 2031 than it would be in 2026. But just for all of us to know, this is the plan, but let's also understand the plan has short and intermediate-term consequences, and the tunnel is a challenge we're going to deal with until that bridge is done. When the bridge is done, I would feel very different about projects west of the railroad tracks. So just for those who may have heard comments at the last meeting and wonder how I got from there to here, none about, nothing about this plan is binding to a specific project. We're still going to evaluate those projects based on all of those factors, and I for one would have pause about increased density until we deal with the railroad overpass.
Well, and that's the special thing about this, is it kind of has weighted values on what can go there. So the place type is not set, and you can take that into consideration, too.
Ms. Hodges, just thank you again for all your work and, and taking this from start to finish. I know it was a bear to deal with, and you did a great job. Any other comments? Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Item 9.2, which is ordinance 4923-25, the third and final reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of 21.43 acres, located at 2875 East Oakland Avenue, from R4 and B4 to R5.
Good evening, Commissioner. There have been no changes, and staff recommends approval.
Any comments or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Yes, Mayor. The next item is under other, the next several items are under other, item 10.1, is to consider approval of a concept plan amendment for the property located at Zero Watauga Road, known as Heidi's House of Hope, and this is a public hearing.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner. Tonight, this is a request for a concept plan amendment of a property that was recently rezoned in January of this year for a planned residential development. Planning Commissioner heard the request on August 12th and recommended approval. There was a neighborhood meeting held on August 11th, and signs and letters were sent out to property owners within 200 feet of the request. Tonight is the first and last reading of the City Commission and is also a public hearing. Just to remind the, the Commission and those watching where this is located, it is off of Watauga Road and has been previously rezoned from agricultural to planned residential earlier this year. The request is to amend the approved concept plan for the interior road network and to relocate some structures and buildings to account for the degree of slope and grade where the, what I will further call the loop road laid on the property. The current conditions of the site that we're looking at is along kind of the power-line ridge where the slope is very steep and varies along that piece of property. It's also very wooded and has less vegetation as you move towards Watauga Road. Again, it was rezoned in January, consisting of 184 units. And the previous approved concept plan, this is what we will be making a recommendation to change. This is what staff is referring to as the loop road here. It consists of three public roads and three private roads with dead-end cul-de-sac roads gaining access off that loop road. The proposed plan eliminates that loop and provides two cul-de-sac dead ends, a Y turnaround, and the access to, this is a observation lookout deck, and some kind of rental cabins that they're proposing would gain access off of the end of the cul-de-sac. The units, due to the change of interior layout, are decreasing by 46 to a total of 138 units. There is adequate parking with 292 spaces, and there is a change from three public and three private roads to four public and four private roads. So side by side, staff does have some concern over the private drives accessing off of the end of the cul-de-sac. This is a public hearing, and the applicant was going to be here. They got stuck due to the weather in it on their flight. They are delayed, but asked me to pass along that those roads here are kind of very unlikely at the time, and they wanted them to be presented and provided in case they ever figured out how to make those occur. So just a comparison, staff's concern are those northern roads, it could lead to confusion and congested, and we recommend that they, those specific access points be evaluated down the road, but still recommend approval of that concept plan. It still meets elements of the Horizon 2045 by promoting environmental stewardship, working with the mountain and with the environment around it rather than grading into it, and it promotes new and different housing options. Public meeting was held. There were six attendees, and similar to the rezoning, their concerns were traffic on Watauga Road and the location in Fire Access Road, none of which were directly related to the proposed amendment to the plan. Staff recommends approval. Due to it decreasing in density, it still provides multifamily and different type of housing options. However, we would recommend that the private roads off the cul-de-sac further be evaluated and could be changed or altered and approved at staff's recommendation if it's not deemed a major change to the approved concept plan.
How do we do that within the ordinance? It's just approving those roads, but you're saying with condition. So do we need to amend?
No, ma'am. The approval is to allow the concept plan as presented and allow the applicant and developer to rework those roads if they ever came to fruition and allow staff to evaluate. And if it's not deemed a major change to what is presented tonight, they would not need to come back for further amendment approval.
The middle road you referred to as a Y, I've heard those referred to as hammerheads, and I run into those in Knox County all the time, and they're horrible because people think they're parking spots. And so I'm just curious to, probably, I don't know if Anthony, sorry, this may be an Anthony Todd question, but do we have concerns about that, and how would we manage it? I don't know of anywhere we've done that kind of configuration at the end of a street, and so I'd just be curious for a frame of reference.
We do have locations like that, and on public streets, we're able to post it no parking. This would be a private street, so we would not be able to post that no parking. That would be up to them to control that. But it can be a problem, yes.
And if I, if I recall correctly, the units on that private drive were to be Airbnb-type situation where it wouldn't be permanent housing, is that right? Or that was the proposal?
That's what the APK's proposing. We have no, that's not binding that, how they use those properties. And that is in regards to these units here. These units here are just single-family homes with individual driveways as well. So this Y or hammerhead turnaround would be for emergency vehicle requirements.
So are those hammerheads, I haven't heard them called that. Thank you for the education tonight. I mean, can it accommodate a trash truck or a fire engine?
So we do have standards in the subdivision regulations that they have to be built to that would accommodate both emergency service vehicles and trash.
So even that design would accommodate that if it's built the right size?
Until the neighbor can park his LTD in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the one, the one you're referencing is a, that's a street, that's not a private drive, correct?
That, that was a private drive.
The, the lower one?
They're both depicted as private drives.
Gotcha. I thought it was just the upper one.
I may have missed this, but that hammerhead in the middle, is there some reason they didn't want to make it a cul-de-sac turn?
I believe it's due to topography going into that ridge line of the power, the power easements and the, the steep slope along those power lines.
And, you know, Ys are a lot less impactful on, just, there's a lot more asphalt in the cul-de-sac, and then you got to have more water retention and, you know, getting used as a parking spot is, can be frustrating, but it meets all the guidelines in our building code to make sure they can turn around. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, I've got a public hearing first. Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't mean to start deliberating.
It's okay. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for, against, or about this proposal, please come forward. Sylvan? I'll close the public hearing. And any more deliberation or a motion?
I think Greg was making a motion.
I'll make it to, I'll move to approve it as staff presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it and just say that I think this diverse housing is exactly what we need in, in Johnson City. Hopefully, it'll be a good project that, you know, somewhere down the road could be replicated, so. Yeah, it's my second.
Great. Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Ball?
Thank you. The next order of business is item 10.2, which is to consider approval of a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to manage the federally and locally funded Old Gray Station Road project with signal upgrade.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Anthony Todd, the Traffic Engineering and Manager. We are looking for your support to approve a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to manage a project on Old Gray Station Road. The contract will allow us to add sidewalks. It will allow us, allow us to add lanes and widen the lanes so that you would have a three-lane section. This is the approximate section that, it's about 500 feet. What, this, it looks to be the west, but this is rotated just to fit on the, the screen. So that's to the north of Bobby Hicks Highway, and then it goes all the way down to Buckingham on the south side. And you can see the, the different businesses in this area to give you orientation of where you're at. If we'd looked at it from the end, the south end at Buckingham, moving to the north, this is what it currently looks like. As you move a little bit further north, and you start to see some of the businesses. Some of the reason that we're doing this project is there are needs for turn lanes for these businesses. Sometimes during the day, the businesses' driveways are, are causing traffic not to move. It just gets stopped because there's, there's not enough room. As we move forward and to the traffic signal, that is part of the project, to upgrade this traffic signal, and we will add additional lanes, and I will show you that in a second. As you move on to the north side of Bobby Hicks Highway, we go down and we terminate around the end where there are some apartments that have been built recently. This is a short drive-through here, and we'll hope that it goes at the proper speed. The other day, it did not. But this is what it looks like if you drive through it.
You shouldn't be driving.
Actually, I didn't even take this video, so I don't know who was driving and who This is going to give you a feel for what it looks like when it's not busy. When it's busy, it's much different than this. When it's busy, it's much different than this. This is what the project looks like from a far view. I'll get into a little bit more detail, but you can see how it starts at Buckingham and it starts to widen and then it also narrows back as you get to the north side of Bobby Hicks Highway. If you look at the northern side of Bobby Hicks Highway, there's some apartments that are back to the top left and then we're going to add a right turn lane off of Bobby Hicks to go on to Old Gray Station Road. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be adding or improving the traffic signal. So, we'll be improving the traffic signal to accommodate the improved lanes. Right now, it operates in what's called a split-phase operation, which means one side goes and then the other side goes. It's very inefficient, so this will add about 30% more efficient operation by doing this. It will also be connected with the next project that we'll talk about to some of the adjacent signals. As you move through the project, you see that there's three lanes that allows for turns into some of the businesses and it will taper back down by the time you get down to Buckingham. Funding is 80/20, so it is 80% federal and 20% this Johnson City and so the total project cost is 4.225 million and of that, we are responsible for 845,000 of that. Do you have any questions?
How many do you plan to rent, you fries, in the lane that you're going to build here?
There could be quite a few, but at least the other traffic will be able to drive past.
Also, you had the funding slide up there and I think it's, this is the project that Congresswoman Hershberger helped us with, is that correct? And so, really want to thank.
We actually have another project that is adjacent to this that, that she was able to secure for us that we will look at and I want to back up and show you approximately where that's located.
In addition to this one?
It is. So, it ties in at Buckingham and goes to the south and depending on how far we can go with that money, we will at least be working on this curve, which is not a good curve, and take it as far as we can to widen the road. So, that's in addition to this.
To sort of straighten the curve or just what would?
We will have to, I didn't bring that slide, but we will have to come out over in this direction to tie it in without having to rebuild the culvert there.
Rebuild the what?
There's a culvert just off the picture here. There's a creek that goes through.
So, we'll have sidewalks now on Old Gray Station Road through, at least through the intersection and down past the businesses.
Yes.
Will we be putting in new streetlights as well?
Yes, we'll add streetlights too. It won't be part of this project, but we will add streetlights.
Okay. It'll be the new LEDs that, you know, don't have a whole lot of collateral light that we see. Well, it's a great project, so the big question is, when do we start?
Well, we already have a consultant lined up. They're waiting for this approval. Once the contract's approved, then TDOT has to give us a notice to proceed. Once we get that and we're allowed to let them get started working on it, but they've already been secured.
Is this going to be both in-house and, I don't like to say out-of-house, but...
It's a joint venture.
Are we going to be doing any of the work inside?
We may do some work, but it won't be immediately adjacent to this project. So, if we do work, it will be kind of separate like the street lighting.
So, we'll bid this project out?
Yes.
Okay.
And this project does require approval by the commission and we obviously would have liked for you to support this.
And if it's, and I may have missed it, but when would the bid letting be?
Typically, what happens is the design like this could take up to a year and we would expect right away to take about a year. So, we're probably looking at two to three years before we can get started with construction.
Got you. Well, at least we're at a starting point.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
The next item for consideration is item 10.3, which is to consider approval of a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to oversee a federally-funded signalization project at multiple locations.
This is a similar contract. TDOT has a standard contract that we have to sign with them in order to manage these projects. Allows us to use the federal dollars. I'll get to the funding is better even on this one, so that'll be at the end. This is to give you some orientation of where we're looking at. This signal here would be new. The rest of them would be upgrades of existing signals and we'll look at each one of them The signal at Gray Station Road and Suncrest Drive would be a new signal and to give you some orientation, we've got the fire station just down the road and this is where the Keebler Farm or Keebler Meadows is to your left. And this is what it looks like from Old Gray Station Road. The next one is at Bobby Hicks and Sid Martin. The old city building is right here and then the intersection that we just talked about is right here at Old Gray Station Road. And here's what it looks like looking from Sid Martin Road. The next one is Green Line and Peoples. This intersection is currently a span wire intersection, so we'd be upgrading it. We need to upgrade it because the span wire that we've got there is tangled in with everybody else's wires and it's barely able to be up high enough to get above traffic. So, we need to upgrade this one. Here's what it looks like. In fact, we had to re-span it just the other day. I guess it was about two or three weeks ago because it was starting to drop down too The next ones are in the downtown area, so if you look to the north, you're going to see Market Street and on the south side is going to be Pine Street. Market Street, these poles were actually originally used for traffic signals and for state route signs back in the day. So, I believe this has been up at least since the 50s, perhaps even longer than that. It's time for them to change. The next one is Pine Street, or I'm sorry, Walnut Street. And so, with the development of the Walnut Street air corridor, we expect more traffic to come through here and plus we have a site distance issue at Walnut Street. And this is to show you what the site distance problem is and when you have a site distance problem at a signal, it's not recommended to remove the signal. It's recommended just to improve what you've got. So, site distance that we should have is about 300 feet, which is this length and this is about what we have, which is woefully inadequate. The next intersection is Maple Street and this intersection is next to the, the school board building and it also is the only passage that we've got in that area that goes underneath the interstate and we also expect that that area will redevelop at some point and so we've chosen not to recommend to remove it either. Pine Street is the last one and it also has a major site distance problem and something that you just can't fix when you, when you've got a building there. So, you've got, again, the 300 feet is what you need, which is down off the screen and that's about what we have. The funding for the project is 100% federal and it's because it's a safety project and it's $3.875 million for the project. This again requires a vote and we recommend your approval.
Move approval.
I have a question. Well, I'll second, but if I can get a question?
Sure.
I think I missed kind of the front part of the presentation. Are there any traffic signals for Suncrest that we had kind of promised the people out there?
Suncrest, the first one that we looked at was at Suncrest and Old Gray Station, I'm sorry, Gray Station Route. So, that one is not currently there, but that's part of this project.
How far out, I'm not connected with where, where that is if we could see it.
So, this is Shatten Road and Gray Station and the Keebler Meadows is right to our left.
That's that new project, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The museum's right about a drive.
And Sam Jenkins, we were already working in that area with a turn lane out there, working towards a traffic signal there that we're going to handle locally.
Does that get you up to the school from this road or is it on down a little bit?
It is the next one at Sam Jenkins. That's the one we're going to do locally because this takes so long to happen.
Okay, okay. So, that, that one's going to happen?
Yes, we've already...
So, get in and out of the school and the gray fossils?
We already bid the, the traffic signal pole.
Great, great. I'm sorry, I slid by me.
Ms. Louse?
And with that, you know, I, you guys do all the traffic studies, but the ones on Roan Street and, you know, I'm all about getting rid of red lights too where you don't need them and slowing traffic down in different ways and that's pretty pedestrian, it potentially could be a very pedestrian-friendly area. And so, just kind of making that known that as this moves forward, if there's an option to look at other things too and use that money somewhere else, that might be intriguing as well, but I'm still excited about this. Thanks for all your work upon it.
Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
The next order of business is item 10.4, which is to consider a resolution to accept a donation and conveyance of 10.76 plus or minus acres of property on Lower Tannery Nobbs from GRTS Partners, GP, Tennessee General Partners for property located in the Ninth Civil District of Washington County.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. I'm Steve Will, Assistant City Manager. So, this resolution would represent your formal acceptance of a donation and conveyance of property from Mr. Grant Summers through his GRTS partnership for the development of a bicycle playground and associated trails at Lower Tannery. You probably recall back in 2016, Mr. Summers through this same partnership donated about 45 plus or minus acres on Upper Tannery, which has been a very, very successful project, both for our local community as well as visitors that may be coming into our area. So, there's a lot of people to thank for this, for us getting to this place here today. Mr. Abraham McIntyre, who's the Executive Director of SOBA, he's here with us this evening. He was instrumental in this process and recently received a grant, a health initiative grant for a little over $400,000 over a three-year period. That will be invested into this project. Obviously, our Parks and Recreation staff, our Public Works folks who've been involved as well and will have further involvement as we move forward. With this donation acceptance, we will be able to begin in-kind work, the first steps of which will be to build an access road from East Market here up to Lower Tannery. We'll also be constructing some restroom facilities and a parking area to kind of get the project kicked off. Our local Rotary Clubs, particularly the Johnson City Rotary Club, has raised over $200,000 for this project as well. And a few weeks ago, myself and some Parks and Recreation staff, our Director April Norris and Ms. Maggie Darden, Dr. Maggie Darden I should say, we were down and met with Mayor Grandy and learned that through the governor's allocation of monies for the First Frontier Trail, there is $250,000 of that $5 million that has been allocated for this project. So, that was great news as well. So, we would certainly recommend your acceptance of this donation this evening.
Move approval.
I will absolutely second. Can't wait to get it done.
Any comments or questions? Not, Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
And your final order of formal business tonight is item 6857, King General Contractors for a project that is called Cherokee Stormwater Basin Project.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, very excited to be here presenting this project. This is a grant-funded project from the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. We're asking, I'm here tonight to, Jeff Harmon with the Public Works Department, I'm here to ask you to approve the low bid and award the contract to King General Contractors. The design for this project was through Barge Design Solutions. In many ways, this is the crowning achievement for West Walnut. This will be our final piece. We've had a pretty long time with the construction. This is a very important project for us. We've been excited to working on this. This is, has to do with the Harm and Ice property. We purchased this property in '22. This is what it looked like when we first purchased it. One of the first things that we did was is create the Cherokee extension to add more access from West Walnut Street to State of Franklin. Our project goals with this were threefold. We wanted to, we were required within the parameters of the grant to do a stormwater control project. So, we, we have needs downstream in Brush Creek and downtown to have more retention of our stormwater. So, that was our primary goal. Secondary goal, within those parameters from the TDEC grant, were we need to educate the public on the importance of stormwater. And thirdly, we were able to, within the, within the grant, to add a gathering space so that we could turn this into a park to facilitate the educational part of this project. The grant provided us with $3 million. We received two bids. The low bid was 5.4 million. Now, we did anticipate, we did plan on having more money. We wanted to have more items in there. We wanted to make sure that we at least had $3 million. This came in quite a bit higher. Some of that is reflective of the, the increased costs that we're seeing right now in construction. So, one of the challenges was to value engineer this project and do it quickly so that we could still fit within the, the timeframe that TDEC has laid out. So, we had to remove quite a bit of the items. So, what we did was is we took 2.8 million out. That allowed us to keep 400,000 of that $3 million that we will use to use our own forces and also to subcontract, replace those elements that we had to take out. The main part of the project will be accomplished by, the important part of the project will be accomplished by King General. Some of the things that we've had to remove were we've taken out the west side of the project. We'll do that at a later time. The landscaping and stream building, we rely on Pat Walding. He's such a great asset for our, for our department. We'll be doing that in-house. We'll be purchasing the plants through the grant. Pavers and sidewalk and railing, those are things that, that we can do as well. The pavers and railing and the electrical and fountain, we will do those through a subcontract. So, this is what the site looks like right now. This is the vision that Barge came up with. This is, is going to take a, right now, which is nothing more than a spoiled yard as you could see before, we're going to be turning it into a great place for people to gather in a park. Some of the big points of interest are, we will have a fountain. This will serve twofold. It will be an attraction for the area, but it'll also aerate the standing water that we will have there to help the wildlife establish. This will be a lighted fountain. One of the other things that we were throughout the, doing the, the West Walnut Street project, we were able to find an old stream that had been put underground and was hidden for over 100 years. We were able to take that down to this, to this project and as you can see over to the right, there is a stream that we are going to use that water to create a flowing body of water.
100 years ago, we thought that was a real good idea.
Yeah, it's, that's quite common around and now everybody's trying to bring them back up. Burlington Project is actually one of those. We also have places within the project to establish some art, so we, we do want to make this a, a, a lot of... this a, a lot of places where we can, we can add art as well as the educational part of this. So we're very excited to get started on this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for staff or comments?
When will you get started?
We have to get started by the end of September.
Okay.
So we've already talked with the contractor prior to the beginning.
It's three and a half weeks.
Yes. TDEC didn't say what that looked like, so that could be a shovel in the ground and throwing some dirt over the shoulder, but the contractor's ready to get started by the end of this month.
I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
That is all of the formal agenda we have for tonight.
I'll start to my left. Commissioner Wise, any comments or commissioner comments?
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Brock?
Of course.
Don't forget your mic.
You know, I failed, there we go, I failed to start jotting the numbers down, but Ms. Ball, I think from what I heard from staff, we've gained about, what, $10 million worth of grant money for these projects? So I just want to thank staff for the hard work, and I think many people have gone out to find where this funding is, and we're going after it. And if the number is 10 million, I mean, that's a tremendous amount of investment for our citizens to have the kind of projects that y'all presented tonight. And I really like the format that we're doing this under other, so we can get some attention on these projects and you kind of keep us updated too about how they're going. But thank y'all very much. Thank you, Mrs. Ball.
Credit goes to the staff. Great work.
Vice Mayor?
No, but just kind of echo Jenny's comments, and I mean, that's, that's a lot for kind of one meeting to kind of go over and some things that are in the pipeline. That was in addition to the road improvement projects that you guys presented a few months ago on, like the red light down at the end of Suncrest farther down and Indian Ridge Road and some other improvements, so keep up all the projects.
Yeah, and I would add, you know, compliments to staff and to City Manager Ball. You know, it was probably six, seven months ago that I said, "We need to look for money in any place we can find," and you all have. And, you know, Johnson City is a great place with great community, and I can't state this as fact, but during my tenure, I don't think I've seen so much, not just as far as in grants, but also in community commitment to the community. I mean, million-dollar donation for our fire department, the second phase of Tannery Nobbs, and I'm sure there will be more to come. So I think that speaks to the faith that the majority of this community has in this city and to the hard work of our staff, and just want to thank y'all. Yeah?
I do want to say one more thing. I think most of you, staff-wise, of course, know and remember Mark Fanoukhan, who passed away this past Saturday, I believe. He was just one of the great human beings of Johnson City, and I think his kindness and all the stuff that he did in community service will be known for a long, long time. You know, Mark was part of the original Turkey Trot Group that sat around a table 20 years ago and decided we were going to do this. And it was like five or six people, and those same five or six people, we're 20 years older, but we're still there making it. But Mark was a tremendous leader in that, and he always just had the faith that this was, this was just good for the community. So we've kind of come up, this is our 20th anniversary. Our shirt design has a picture of every logo for the 20 years that are incorporated into a design on the front, and we got a copy of one a few days before Mark passed away, and I took it over to the house, and his wife texted and said, "Oh, my goodness, he's got it on," and he's just smiling like everything. So I want us to keep in mind, not only Mark as a human being, but what he represents in this, in this city that we, you know, if we give to the greater good, it's going to make this city a better place to live, and it's going to make us all feel better. So our final slogan for the Turkey Trot this year is 5,000 for Mark, 5,000 people for Mark on our 20th anniversary. So I hope you will all come, and we'll remember him-
And register.
And register.
5,000 only counts if you register.
That's right. That's right. And thank you.
I would add to that, you never went to early voting, but Mark Fanoukhan was there working.
Absolutely.
You rarely went to an event at Freedom Hall or the Mini Dome or ETSU where Mark wasn't working security. He was not one who celebrated the sort of cynicism and skepticism. He got in there and he did it, and he knew who was doing things, and he knew what was going on, and he always had a positive word to say. And yet, he had a realistic assessment of what was going on. I remember conversations with him now, eight or nine years ago, where there were things that weren't the way he thought they should be, and he was also very candid about that. But he was not one to sit on the sideline and expect someone else to do the lifting. He did the lifting.
And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.